It's five o'clock. The December business meeting of the Germantown Board of Education is called to order. First order of business is moment of silence. Mr. Curry, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
My second.
Oh, sorry.
A motion was made by Mr. Strain and seconded by Mr. Curry and Ms. Griffith. Ms. Subramani, if you would call roll.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is recognitions and awards.
We do not have any recognition and awards this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next is reports. Mr. Strain, if you could give us the T L N update.
New laws enacted during Tennessee General Assembly's recent third special legislative session of the year remain in the news. On December tenth, twenty twenty-one, the United States District Court for the Middle District of Tennessee preliminarily enjoined the state of Tennessee and Tennessee Department of Education from enforcing new state laws regarding face coverings in schools and that prohibit local health officials and schools from making quarantine decisions as they relate to public schools. The injunction issued in the case R K V Lee will remain in place during the penancy of that action. Additionally, the Shelby County Democratic and Republican Parties have announced they will not be endorsing school board candidates for the twenty twenty-two election. As reported at last month's business meeting, legislature passed a new law prohibiting, or sorry, new law permitting partisan school board elections with a decision to be made by county political party primary boards. And finally, the Tennessee Department of Education is currently accepting public comments regarding the state's education funding formula. Written comments may be submitted via email to t n e d u dot funding at t n dot gov. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Strain. Next is the chairman's report. Mr. Strain reports that he attended Dogwood's P T O meeting, participated in the Germantown Holiday Parade, and met with Commissioner Brandon Morrison. Ms. Landers reports she attended the Riverdale Middle Choir Concert and O P E B trustee meeting. She participated in the Germantown Holiday Parade and served as a judge for the Forest Hill Elementary School Spelling Bee. Mr. Curry reports he attended three exciting Houston Middle School basketball games, one being the Battle of Germantown, Houston Middle versus Riverdale, the Forest Hill Elementary Schools Car Show, and the Houston Bands Holiday Concert. He also participated in the Germantown Holiday Parade. Ms. Griffith reports she virtually attended Houston Middle School Counselor Advisory Council Meeting and Dogwood Elementary's P T O Meeting. She also participated in the Germantown Holiday Parade, presented to Cub Scout PAC two seven one, and attended Forest Hill Elementary School Spelling Bee, Houston Middle School Boys and Girls Basketball Games, and Houston Bands Holiday Concert. Ms. Ove reports she attended Houston, excuse me, attended Forest Hill Elementary Spelling Bee, the Houston Bands Holiday Concert, and participated in the Germantown Holiday Parade. She met with other municipal chairman concerning legislative advocacy and other items. She also participated in Tennessee's Department of Education's Southwest Region School Funding Local Match Discussion Session in Jackson, Tennessee. First, we wish the best of luck to our high school students who start exams tomorrow and all our younger students as they wrap up the fall semester. Study hard and finish strong. We would also like to wish our students, our staff, and our families happy holidays, and we hope that winter break provides a time of peace, joy, and restoration to us all. Today, Superintendent Manuel, Mayor Palazzolo, interim city administrator Hausmann, and I attended the State Department of Education's Southwest Region School Funding Local Match Discussion Session in Jackson, Tennessee with other local district leadership. There is a push from our governor and the commissioner of education to change the funding formula for education in the state of Tennessee from the B E P to a student-based formula. The B E P is a thirty-year-old formula that, for the most part, everyone agrees is broken. It does not provide for the realities and needs of a twenty-first century classroom, nor the ever-increasing, mostly underfunded demands of our legislators. However, the push for the D O E to create a new formula in ninety days for the upcoming legislative session should worry everyone. There have been town halls across the state for parents and other stakeholders to express their needs and dreams for what the new funding could provide. Some have been productive. Some have been hijacked for political purposes. There are eighteen subcommittees looking at different aspects that could be considered in funding. Some of them have only met a few times in this ninety-day window. Not one school board member in the state serves on any of these subcommittees. School boards are tasked with reviewing and approving district budgets. Annually, hard decisions have to be made by these elected bodies regarding how to best steward the monies provided for the greatest benefit of our students. To this point, your elected school representation has been left out of the conversation regarding what needs to be in this new formula. Let's make it local. In Germantown, there is a great concern that the new student-based formula could cost our district millions of dollars in funding. Millions. Statewide, G M S D is already in the bottom third of per pupil funding. This funding change matters to our students. The B E P took years to create. Updating and improving it deserves more thoughtful consideration than ninety days can provide. We all need to pay closer attention to what is going on in Nashville. Our students deserve better than a ninety-day solution. Thank you. Mr. Jones, if you could give us our financial report?
You have the financial reports for the month ending November thirty, two thousand twenty-one. First, the balance sheet. Total assets, liabilities, and fund balance in the following funds are: School operating funds, sixteen point nine million; federal projects, fifteen hundred dollars; the cafeteria fund, five hundred sixty-five thousand; capital projects, one point six million; the health insurance fund, one point eight million; O P E B trust, four point two million; and in our general fixed asset account group, one hundred twenty point six million. Just a few comments on the statement of revenues and expenses or expenditures. In the health insurance fund, one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars was received in stop-loss reimbursement for health insurance claims. In the cafeteria fund, S F E reported a net income of eighty-nine thousand for the month. And finally, in the O P E B trust fund, year-to-date realized and unrealized gains on investments total twenty-two thousand. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Manuel?
So we wanted to give the board an update on what we're doing around professional development for leaders in our district. And so we're going to highlight some of the leadership training that we have done this semester that are new. And as always, we have a growth mindset, and we're trying to improve what we're doing in the district. So first, the district pays for memberships for all of our leaders, assistant principals, principals, district office staff, to participate in A L I, the Associate Leadership Institute. This is a program sponsored through T O S, and it's one of their programs they provide for us, and they have professional development that goes year-round. They have virtual and they have in-person trainings that you can go to on numerous topics. This is one of the ways that our leaders in our district can move their licensure and get the hours that they need for Tassel credits, but it's also a way to grow as a leader in our district. So you can see some of the offerings that we've seen August, September, October, November of this year. Setting, goal-setting, and student-engaged learning, making schools safe; T C A T one oh one, post-secondary technical education; supporting career-ready schools using engaging instructional strategies during the COVID area and beyond; women in educational leadership; supervisor cohort events; legal issues with Chuck Kegel; putting the foundation back in the foundation literacy. You can see throughout all these months, there's a range of topics. And so we are thankful that this is something that we provide for our leaders, and they're all taking advantage of these opportunities. You can see some of the December offerings, which were really strong, digging deeper into active learning. December ninth, they did a book study that is continuing, The Habits of Effective Leaders. S P E D five oh four Title IX Training. These are all services that they're providing. And we also get to meet with other leaders from across the state, other assistant principals, other principals, other district office staff to compare best practices. Then also, in the district, we have in-person meetings planned where we are actually going to meet together and watch some of those virtual opportunities. Ms. Stratton is working to get teams together on different topics. So you can see they've given me the keys to the building. Now what? Principal trainings. These are all P D opportunities for our staff. But that's just, that's just one area through A L I, through the T O S organization that we're proud of. But we've also taken a new stance on how we are providing our own professional development from G M S D. So we have added, and this has been one of the benefits of COVID, virtual meetings, getting handy with Zoom, Google Meets, all those different formats. We have now folded that into our meetings with our administration, whether it's principals, assistant principals, and we're alternating in-person meetings with those virtual meetings. And what it's allowed us to do is really focus on all the stuff that we have to, and you know those things that are operational, making sure that we're submitting reports, making sure, how are you doing your five oh fours, all those things that we have to do. But now, because we're using both formats, we can move into a different avenue of doing something more strategic and looking broader at some of the goals of the district. So you can see that one of the things that they accomplished was coming up with their own norm setting and values as our principals and assistant principals. And they came up with a place where you belong, you are valued, and your contributions matter. That's kind of like their motto this year. That's their vision. That's their value, that everything we do should operate and feel like that. It's switching. So know that then what we could do, because we're using those virtual meetings for the operational pieces, the in-person meetings have become more strategic. So each time, we're focusing on the strategic plan goals, and we're talking about what are they doing in their school that are meeting those objectives? Where are the gaps? What are the supports that we need to do from the district-level side that will help them accomplish those goals? So you can see, we've really changed what those in-person meetings look like. So you can see the meetings that we've had so far, Goal One, Two, and Three were our first meetings. And here are some examples of some of the activities. This is not all-encompassing. One of the things we've also done is add icebreakers and things to get to know each other, know about them personally, talk about our languages of how we communicate, how we feel appreciated, so we have better communication amongst our staff. But other things that we talked about, for example, under Goal One, hands-on training to access the state data dashboard and really teaching our principals and assistant principals, how can they use that to really inform their practices in their school to make sure that they're focusing on the right things? Hands-on training to write more effective I E Ps through Easy I E P. Whether we're talking about Goal Two, looking at character strong and giving examples of how that could be implemented in the classroom or through your counselors, but then also working with them to define what are those overlap of roles between the school counselors, the psychologists, the B C B As? How do all those work together, and who's doing what activities, and how are they serving students in their schools? And of course, Goal Three, we met with our H R team, and we were talking about how are we doing state interviews with our employees? We don't just want to do exit interviews when they're leaving us and find out why they leave. We want to know, what makes you stay here? What makes you feel valued? What can we do to improve your experience here in G M S D? And so that's been something really important that we have added. And then coaching conversations and teaching them how to coach their teachers and staff at their school. Part of this goes into their principal evaluations, and so know that they use the team administrative rubric. And it has really helped them think about what are going to be their goals and objectives that they want to accomplish for that year. So they may be talking about culture for teacher and learning in their school. They may be talking about what P D they're going to provide for their staff. But they're having a focus for all of our administrators in our schools, and they're having meeting activities, weekly communications, that talk about the strategic plan, that talk about what they're accomplishing. And then we want those informal touches, too, because I think about my journey as an administrator, whether it was an assistant principal or a principal. I learned the most from talking to other people who were doing the same thing. We learn from each other's mistakes. We learn from each other's strengths, and we want to make sure we're incorporating those. So one of the things that we've done with our cabinet members, and they all have their areas of expertise, where it's academics with Ms. Abel or special education with Ms. Huffman, and maybe student services or discipline with Mr. Bland or operations with Mr. Kathy, can be talking about how can you get the best out of your plant manager? Or Ms. Stratton may be talking about coaching activities. We want to make sure that we're doing rotations for our administrative staff so that we're having those regular informal touches to talk about our own growth experiences and share our expertise with them. So you can see the rotations that we've done this semester to really help our leaders grow and develop. And that concludes my report on what we're doing around leadership training for our assistant principals, principals, and district office staff.
Thank you, Superintendent Manuel. Ms. Subramani, are there any citizens to be heard this evening? Thank you. Thank you. We move on to the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve all the items in the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Griffith and seconded by Mr. Curry. Items in the consent agenda include approval of the minutes and review and revision of policies second reading. Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're now to board action items. First item for us is revision of policies after one reading. Is there a motion?
I move to waive the second reading and adopt after one reading the revision of policy six point one, six point three one three, discipline policy, and repeal of policy six point four zero eight one, safe relocation of students to become effective January first, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Curry and seconded by Mr. Strain. Is there discussion?
I would just like to highlight why we are changing this policy. This is a requirement based on state law, as we discussed during our work session. We did make the changes to make sure that we included staff and student based on board recommendations on those policies. So it reflects what was discussed, but once again, this is a requirement from our state legislature.
Any other comment? Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to miscellaneous fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget amendment number twenty. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the miscellaneous fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment number twenty.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'll be glad to give an overview on this. We were applied for and awarded the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant. There's a form that y'all have. This is also on the state's website about the E L C grant for short. This provides funding, and you can see for numerous things that you can do in relation to COVID, things that you could spend the money on, nurses' salaries and benefits and contract costs, travel contracts with academic institutions, supplies and equipment for testing, and those can be either P C R tests or the saliva test that you have, minor construction. If you're going to provide testing, you can, it allows for some paving, some opportunities, costs associated with operating pop-up testing sites, mass testing sites. And so we are happy that we are awarded this grant. It is just over a million dollars for our district that we provide. We're not required to provide mass testing for all of our students, so if anyone's worried that I don't want my child tested, that's not the case. This is an opportunity that we provide, so if someone was exposed, if we had a team, if we had a staff member that wanted to come back due to exposure or due to a positive test, we can provide that testing for them. So as we develop this, how we're going to spend this money, we will be sharing it out with the board. One of the things that we're excited about, it will provide the opportunity for us to develop a healthcare clinic for our staff. So instead of taking time off, and you would have to take the whole day off to take a child or a staff member, you can actually provide the opportunity for them to come to our clinic. It saves on health insurance costs also. It can, we can provide a pharmacy through this also, where they are actually given some antibiotics or smaller selection of drugs, and that also saves on our plan. So know that as we develop this, we will be sharing more updates with the board, but we're excited that we were awarded this grant from the State Department of Education.
Any comments or questions? I just, I do want to say that the health clinic, the employee health clinic, is something that's been on our list for a while. I know Ms. Stratton has advocated for that for a long time, and to see that possibly come to fruition would be exciting, with great benefit for our staff. Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of the updated L E A Health and Safety Plan. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the updated L E A Health and Safety Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There are changes to our plan that I think we have discussed as a board about timing and what we would look at. The main change here is moving to masking to be a highly recommended status versus a required status based on case rates and transmission rates that we've seen in our school. The plan has been uploaded to reflect that statement that we have. You also have a hard copy with you in your folders, but that's the main change that you'll see in this Health and Safety Plan.
Any comments, questions? Ms. Subramani?
I was just making sure. That's the only, is there any other?
There are sections that aren't included, if you compared the other, that are outdated. So for example, there's a whole section on contact tracing. That's a responsibility of the health department, that they have that responsibility. And there's also some confusion now of where we are. So we've got notification from the health department, that the local health department, that we are now to report cases to the state health department. Then the state health department will then funnel that back to our local health department, who will investigate. And if any quarantines or close contacts are going to be identified, they would take on that action. There's not a form for us to do that yet. There's not a way for us to do that, so that's in development right now. But those are the major, those are the major changes. There are some sections left off because of where we are right now.
Thank you for that clarification and update on where we are, and we're not sure, because of other entities, where we are.
Any other discussion? Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the Germantown Board of Education two thousand twenty-two legislative agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Germantown Board of Education two thousand twenty-two legislative agenda.
Second?
Second.
Or is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Griffith. The motion was made by Mr. Strain and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Mr. Strain, if you would, please give us a little bit of an overview of the legislative agenda.
Sure. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven issues on this this year. The first one, Chair Oof, you covered pretty well, I think, in your report. But essentially, we oppose any revisions to education, state education funding that might negatively impact overall district funding. While again, we support a review of the current B E P in ways that, you know, perhaps that could be improved, again, we do have some concerns that that could be changed in a way that would negatively affect not only our district but others. The way I think it's been described a lot, I think it's kind of fitting for time of the holidays. I mean, you can, you can cut one pie in a hundred different ways, but if you don't make the pie bigger, someone's going to not have as much to eat. So there's no reason for any particular district to lose funding here. There can be additional funds devoted to this. The state has record reserves on hand. This is, this is something that could really benefit students statewide, and we hope to see that. Next would be increased funding for teacher pay and mental health and behavioral resources. And again, here, we're just sort of acknowledging the increases the state did provide last year in that respect. And I think it was an opportunity for a lot of our legislators and public to become more familiar with that funding and to realize that every district employs many more teachers than the state pays for. And so we really need not just, if you're going to provide a percentage of funding, it doesn't equal the same funding for all those teachers. And so let's continue to. And so let's continue to increase the amount that our teachers are receiving. And again, just our behavioral mental health resources, that's something that is critical this year and in the future, and we hope to see additional funds to that. Third issue is something I like to call the manual amendment. I hope that it's gaining traction statewide, but you know, we'll keep checking on that. But this is our resolution that we passed earlier this year, encouraging the state to allow districts to make third grade retention decisions based on district data demonstrating students' understanding of ELA such as benchmark assessments. Our next issue is one that, a little bit of a deep dive, I think, into education law, but that, it's relating to our annual measurable objectives, which we call AMOs for short. Those are determined by the Tennessee Department of Education, and I'll ask Mr. Manuel to feel free to step in anytime and correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect here, but it's based on how students perform on TCAP assessments, and it's meant to be an attainable growth goal for students as well as subgroups of students such as students with disabilities or English language learners. And sort of quickly, I guess, if a school doesn't meet AMO targets that are set each year, it can be given a focused designation, which after a period of time can lead to a school becoming designated as a priority school, which could lead to a loss of local control. Superintendents in the department are currently debating whether TCAP data from this past year, two thousand and twenty-one, should be used to set those AMO targets for this upcoming year. We believe that they should and urge the department as well as General Assembly, if any amendments to current law are needed, to allow for that. And Mr. Manuel's been leading the charge with this, with the superintendents, and so I'd welcome him to, to supplement with any additional information.
Yeah, there's disagreement on the state level on whether the state law says that the two thousand and twenty-one data cannot be used to set AMOs, so there's disagreement on that. So the Department of Education is saying that the only recourse for them is to have a change in legislation that says that we can use that two thousand and twenty-one data. The challenge that the districts will have, and we would have, is if we go back to eighteen, nineteen data, pre-pandemic, the goals could be set so high, and the students are no longer at those schools that we would want to show the growth for, that you would have the majority of districts in the state of Tennessee become needs improvement districts. That's a problem. It's not a real reflection of how districts and schools need to perform, it's not a reflection of how we want to grow, because we all admit that we have seen learning loss, and we know that we want to challenge our students and our schools, but to set something back on eighteen, nineteen data is a disservice to schools, it's a disservice to teachers, it's a disservice to staff who, this is part of their evaluation process, this is part of the district's grade that they're going to receive, and it's promoted publicly. So our request to our legislators is do what the department says that they want, which is to use the two thousand and twenty-one data.
Next issue is providing more flexibility in career and technical education teacher licensure requirements. We're of course seeing a shortage in teachers at all levels, but this would provide us an additional way to bring in CTE teachers who have industry experience, work experience, but may not have some of the requirements to be licensed, and just to sort of make some flexibility in that to allow us to find some additional teachers in that regard. Next would be allow school boards to enact their own intra-district transfer policies. This is based on a recent law that was passed this year. I believe every district in the state had its own intra-district policy, maybe there were a couple that didn't, but the state has passed a law setting a particular intra-district transfer policies. We believe it hamstrings our ability to, to manage our individual schools at our district level, and would like to see that either rescinded or amended to simply allow us to have our own policy on point. And then finally, one of our longstanding issues, opposition to any publicly funded education savings accounts or vouchers. Happy to answer any questions if anyone on the board has.
Thank you, Mr. Strain. Are there any more questions or discussion?
I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Strain for all the hard work that you put in to doing this. There's a lot of work that goes into the agenda, so thank you for your service on this. There are items here that are going to require the help of our parents. I think we're getting to a point on some of these issues, particularly the third grade retention, where it directly impacts our families, where, you know, we're doing all we can as a board to advocate, but there is a time and place, and I think we're at that place, where the parents need to mobilize and reach out to their legislature, their, their elected officials in the legislature, if they're truly concerned, which they should be about this, and we've talked a lot about the third grade retention. So I know we, as a board, will do a really good job of advocating, but you know, for the public, getting to know who your legislators are, I think it's very important during this time, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can advocate going into this upcoming session. I think this upcoming session has the potential to be a very interesting one. Hopefully, it's not like last year, but it seems like education is the target these days, so. But again, thank you for your work on this, and parents, again, we, we definitely are going to need you coming up to communicate with your legislators.
Any additional discussion?
Following Mr. Curry, also, I'd like to thank Mr. Strain for his efforts in preparing this. A lot of what we do year to year is in this agenda that we take forth is taking previous things, a lot of times we mark them off because either they got approved whether we wanted them to or not, or they did not, and we're like, okay, moving right along. And so in this case, I appreciate really kind of the cleaning up of some things. I noticed that we are going, and we've kind of talked a little bit about just the increase of funding for staff, and we've, we've kind of combined teacher pay and mental health and behavioral resources. But to everyone's point, the legislative advocacy, this is, this is kind of like our map, our framework that we go with, and it really does help. I will say that having really worked alongside each other this, this past year, what a year it's been legislatively speaking, that these points need to be made and continue to be made, and we will continue to do that, and I look forward to also continuing to rally the troops in the community to join our efforts. As far as, and I really appreciate your comments, Mr. Strain, on the CTE licensure requirements and just flexibility in general. We, we've seen some reduction in applicants across the country and in the profession, and there's a lot of really wonderful and talented people that really could make an impact in public schools and around, not only around here, but also around the state. And so I think that's one that we and our board continue to prioritize. To your point on the AMOs, how in the world are we, you know, reality's reality. If we can't be compared to what we were actually doing, and then it's going to set us up for failure, why in the world would we be for that? So I think that's a strong one that is super important to focus on and highlight here as well. As far as intra-district policies, transfer policies, that's something that I think a lot of people don't even realize happened in the way that with our board being, excuse me, our district being kind of small and also snug in enrollment at each school, I think that that's something that's really important to continue to bring up as well. So again, thank you for just keeping everything front and center, but also in a very concise way, and it's easy to talk about, and this format is something that I look forward to alongside each of you continuing to focus on and advocate on behalf of our district.
Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move on to election of chairman. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to nominate Angela Griffith as the chairman of the Germantown Board of Education.
The chair seconds. Is there discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll yield my remarks at this time to you.
There isn't a person on this board that I don't believe could, couldn't lead this board selectively, excellently. There is strong leadership, there is integrity, there is commitment and focus on students as being the priority of our district. It has been an honor to serve this past year. It has also been very, very challenging, not with these board members, they are outstanding, but in terms of the environment in which we have, we have been trying to serve. I feel that Angela Griffith would serve in a wonderful way in the following year to continue the progress that we've made and strive for even more, so I am pleased to endorse her as chairman of this board.
I just want to start off by thanking Chairman Oof for your service in probably one of the most challenging years we've ever had. From the initial board retreat where we got together and set our goals, you've been a steady hand on the wheel, and your, just your demeanor and your calmness, it's, it's really helped us during these times. Your leadership, helping me as a new board member, be something I'm always grateful for. And so while, while we're transitioning, again, I will always be grateful for your service and thank you for what you've done. To Ms. Griffith, I am, again, honored to nominate you as our chair for the upcoming year. It's an honor to serve with you. Your infectious positivity, I think, is something that will serve us well during this upcoming year, I think, is, we'd like to think that things will not be any worse, we just never know, but it, but I'm going for the positive here, so no, I am, I, I, just knowing Ms. Griffith and how she approaches things, always with a smile, with a candid attitude. Again, I am very excited to see how you will lead us this upcoming year, and again, could not be prouder to nominate you for the position, so.
I certainly echo Mr. Curry's comments about Ms. Oof, thank you for your service this past year. I think you'd be hard pressed to find someone with more passion about our students, our district and our community than Ms. Griffith, our legislative agenda from last year, if Ms. Griffith had not been willing to help from the get-go with that. So thank you for, to both of you for your work this past year, and look forward to serving alongside you again.
Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to election of vice chairman. Is there a motion?
I move to nominate Amy Oof as the vice chairman of the Germantown Board of Education.
Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion?
I think Mr. Curry, again, phrased it well about steady hand. I've told Ms. Oof a couple of times that I've sort of considered her a Yoda-like figure for, for me especially over the past year, and I do have Star Wars characters for everyone in the room, but I'll leave that for another time. But again, Ms. Oof is someone whose passion for public education for this district is unmatched, yet she is able to provide a steady hand leadership to all of us, and while it's only been, of course, me and Mr. Curry's only year, I understand it was a pretty tumultuous one compared to some, so we appreciate you doing that, and again, look forward to you continuing to be a part of the leadership team. Also like to thank Ms. Landers for her service in this role. She too, with her experience and knowledge, was such a guiding hand for all of us last year.
Any other discussion?
I would like to thank Chairman O for her service over the most interesting and unique year quite possibly in the twenty-first century, I'm just going to give it that, of public education, specific in our country, our state, our county, and our city. To her point earlier, the inner working of this board, the dynamic, the teamwork, the support, the understanding, collaboration, the personalities were present, but her ability to bring them together and really foster that has been something that has certainly changed the momentum of what we are able as a body to do, and that is not lost on any of us, and I would be remiss if I didn't point it out, because it was at the most crucial time that that occurred. And then when we look back in years and years on this past year, that will be the thing that, that sticks with me most. I am grateful for your service, I appreciate your mentorship, and I'm looking forward to the exciting new year, and just again, thank you for being such a wonderful example for all of us, and being so passionate of an ambassador for those that we serve.
I want to just second a little bit of what Mr. Strain said in terms of not the Star Wars characters, but, and thanks to Ms. Landers in her service as vice chair this past year, as challenging of a year as it has been, she has been a wonderful resource to me when, when some of the times things were hitting the fan, and I, she and I would have a conversation, and we, we kind of, kind of removed the emotion from it a little bit, and to have her help and her wisdom and her, the resource of her experience has been a gift. So I look forward to her continuing to, to do that in a capacity, in another capacity, but I appreciate the nomination, thank you. Ms. Subramani, if you would, call roll.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is election of the Tennessee Legislative Network representative. The chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman O, I'd like to nominate Ryan Strain for our Tennessee Legislative Network Representative.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Anyone who knows me knows my, my kind of process for approaching anything is in service, and pitching in our responsibilities is try to leave it a little better than you found it. Well, Mr. Strain, you've certainly done that. This past year, when Mr. Strain has served in this role, little did we know there would be three executive sessions in Nashville. My goodness, he was busy. The conversations that we had amongst our board and with the superintendent and council and as we followed along, the sheer organization and communication written and oral that he brought to, to a time when we needed to be able to, after we identified our legislative advocacy as a district and as a board at our retreat beginning of this year, he took it and ran with it. And again, little did we know there would be so much to take and run with, right? But he did it, he rose to the occasion and then some. I can't imagine what it would have been like without him in that role this year, and I certainly hope that he will not run away in the upcoming year, if, if indeed he will continue to serve in this capacity. I'm certainly thankful for, again, the professionalism that he brings to it. Our hope was Our hope was to expand our legislative advocacy outside of our community, not only with other board members and districts around the state, but also with additional legislators and he has certainly helped us and aided us in doing that. And I, comparing our legislative advocacy in the past year to those around the state that we also see, I would put it up against anybody and I certainly give him so much credit for that, helping us get to that next level that we were so trying to, to get to and achieve. So if he would, if he would be willing, I sure hope so, but I certainly feel very, very confident in nominating him for that position again for the upcoming year.
I'll look through the policy and if I could find a way to permanently have you in this position, I would do it. I mean, the work you have done this year in this role has been, in all seriousness, has been amazing. Your written correspondence has made a difference. Matter of fact, I think part of the reason that we don't have partisan elections here for school board members is a direct result of your, your writing. And so I think we are just extremely fortunate to have you in this place and this time. You've done amazing work. I always look forward to your reports each month, they're detailed, very, very informative and again, just the, I can tell the, the passion of which you approach it. And you know, as a board member, obviously I will continue to do whatever I can to assist, if it means watching some legislative sessions and staying up till 12:30 in the morning watching a special session. But, but again, the burden is not yours to bear alone, but as far as, you know, the output and, you know, everything that you put into it, it's an honor again to nominate you for this position and again, just extreme gratitude for what you do and the effort that you put into the role.
Hear, hear to all that they say. And just, I would, I just will say that our board is better as legislative advocates because you are serving in the capacity you are. You have made us stronger and better and I thank you for that. Ms. Subramani, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move on to announcements. Tonight, the Houston High School Choir is having their concert at Germantown United Methodist Church at 7:00 PM. And the Houston Middle School Choir is having their concert tonight at 6:30 and their cafeteria, cafetorium, I always say that wrong, cafeteria. Our next work session is January 19th, our next business meeting is January 25th and at this time, we have a tentative retreat date of January 22nd for the board retreat. Seeing no additional?
We also have one additional announcement. We will, we will push this out to parents and community members, but we have our dates set for open enrollment where we have transfers and people coming in. It will be January 24th through February 4th, so those are for our transfers, people to apply for transfers. So January 24th through February 4th, and like I said, we will do this in writing. I'll also talk about it at our next board meeting, but since we have the date set, we thought it's important to go ahead and get that out in the community.
All right. Last but not least, happy holidays. This meeting is adjourned.